Let's call this a special joint meeting of the Uba City Council and our Planning Commission. I have a message to read about our virtual information. Governor has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued executive order N-33-20, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. Public health and well-being are top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in the virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of the Zoom screen that is on the bottom of your screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Chairperson Blake?
Here.
Vice Chairperson Silman?
Here.
Commissioner Adams? Commissioner Brookman?
Here.
Oh, she is here, okay. Commissioner Brookman? No. Commissioner Dale? Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Dasher?
Here.
All right, would you all please rise for an invocation by Vice Mayor Shaw and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance by Chairperson Blake?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. We just thank you for all these people that's come together in unity to do what's best for this city, and we just pray you'll just give us wisdom and guidance, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, before we get started, are there any agenda modifications? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and approve the agenda. Appearance of interested citizens. I've got another message to read. Members of the public may address the City Council and the Planning Commission concerning any item that has been described in the notice of this meeting. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the City Council meetings via web conference or submit comments by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in our council chambers. If an attendee does not have facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made at the council chamber podium, which is located in the back. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. We'll start with any comments from Sierra?
No public comments.
Okay. Anybody in the audience desire to speak before we get started? Seeing none? All right. Item number two, Harder Specific Plan Workshop. This will be a specific Harder Specific Plan presentation. It's going to be presented by our Development Services Director, Ben Moody. Mr. Moody?
All right, thank you, everybody. I know this is a special workshop, and it takes a little time out of everybody's schedule. And so with that, this is really to bring everybody up to speed with the Harder project currently, where it's been and where we're at currently with consideration of some major entitlements coming soon. And so this is really about 30 slides. I'm trying to keep it to about 45 minutes. It's interactive, so please ask me questions as we go. The Harder group is here representing. We also have some of their consultants online via Teams, our attorney on Teams, and then staff with Diana and our attorney Shannon, very knowledgeable about some of the integral parts that we've been working through over the last couple of years. And so to kick that off, this really is a piggyback off the, those that were here in 2019. Diana did a presentation over the Realtor's office to show where we were at and where we're going. So the purpose of the workshop, the presentation will cover the purpose of the workshop, provide background on the Harder specific plan, discuss obstacles that they've gone through over the decades since this originally started in the early, late 90s, early 2000s, and review items that are coming before the Planning Commission and the City Council here within the next month or two. So the purpose of it, it's a workshop. There's no action with this. It's really to provide background information related to Harder specific plan and a series of proposed specific plan amendments and related entitlement actions. And so it's really to basically provide you information and then get you thinking, or if there's any issues that I need to think about, or staff can provide to you over the next month or so, when these, when this comes to you too, that we could provide to help make that decision. The former Harder Packing Site, it's north of 20, south of Butte House Road, west of Tharp Road. It was approximately 200 acres, with the Home Depot site developing first. And so within the specific plan area, it was actually about 180 acres that were included in the Harder specific plan area. So a little history on the site, the property was utilized for a cannery, Harder Packing Company. Most of the property was open space, for those that have been around and remember it. In the late 90s, the Harder Packing Company was about to close, when the three principal property owners expressed interest in developing the property. So September 1998, there was a request to annex that was filed with LAFCO, as well as a detachment from the Walton Fire Protection District. In April 1999, annexation was approved, then a lawsuit was filed to invalidate the annexation. February 2000, the annexation was completed. In 2000, October of 2000, so the council approved the Home Depot project located on the north side of State Route 20, west of Tharp Road, approximately 20 acres in size. At that time, staff informed the property owners that any further development of the remaining property, 180 acres, would require the preparation of a specific plan and accompanying environmental document. As such, the owners submitted a specific plan application in January 2001. The City Council then authorized staff to enter into a contract with Quadnough for the preparation of the Harder specific plan and environmental impact report to be paid for by the property owners. So and then in November 2002, early in the drafting of the specific planning EIR, Brown Development Company, along with Harder Packing Company, filed an application for a 360,000 square foot retail center on what was to become the primary commercial portion of the Harder property, abutting the Home Depot site, the Walmart Center, which created the largest commercial project in Uba City at over 535,000 square feet. The scope of the EIR was revised to analyze the impacts of the new project. April 2003, Planning Commission. So the Harder specific plan and the EIR were scheduled for a hearing and recommendation for approval by the Planning Commission. Several days before the public hearing, it became public that a portion of the Uba City marketplace would be a Walmart supercenter. Out of abundance of caution, the public hearing was delayed, and the EIR was modified to provide significantly more detail about the project. Also during this timeframe, the city required preparation of a finance and strategy plan and phasing plan with the intent to help spell out the specific development and the funding for it. October 2004, the City Council approved the Harder specific plan, environmental impact report, and the finance strategy and phasing plan. 2004, November, City Council approved a development agreement with Harder Packing Company, LLC, and established the Harder specific plan infrastructure improvement fee. So that's a lot of stuff right there. So the early 2000s, and really it came up with a, when I started in 2006, we have a the Harder, we came up with a Harder specific plan with an environmental document about that thick. And so when plans and when entitlements come through, we basically then use that DA, that Harder specific plan and those details to establish the criteria on how it was to So this is important. It's a little bit out of, with the chronological order and with the park being a big part of what's currently going on with the revisions, I wanted to throw that in there, that during the development of the Harder specific plan in the Uba City marketplace, there was ongoing discussions with Harder Packing over the size of the retail facilities and the appropriate land uses. An agreement was made that Harder Packing would donate the six-acre park site to the city. The dedication was then increased an additional 1.3 acres to accommodate the water storage tanks located west of the park site. Harder Packing did not receive any compensation for the additional property dedication for the water storage tanks. And so later on, I'll go into that a little bit. So as stated, this is really to provide guidance for the orderly development of Harder Packing Site. And so with the specific plan requirements, it ties even into our growth policies that we've talked about. It was that backstop that got put in place to really say, hey, this is how you're going to develop. It includes land uses, design guidelines, specific plan policies and standards, locations of proposed infrastructure, implementation, financing element. So I'm sure everybody's familiar with the site, being from Uba City. So we have the marketplace, which is Walmart and associated facilities. You have the original undeveloped Harder Packing area with the trucks, and then you have what's to the west, that is basically under consideration here soon. With to the north, you have this residential development, multifamily, you have proposed single-family, commercial, commercial office. And so to the north, you have some residential or two density, existing residential to the west, which borders the county, county-city boundary right here on the north part of it. And then to the south, you have Highway 20 with some commercial facilities and the Toyota dealership and the school to the south.
I have a quick question for you. So has there been any amendments since 2004, or any changes, or any requests for changes?
So there has been a, so there's definitely been some action since 2004. I'll get into it a little bit here with, there was an amendment to the DA, and then also we've had different maps that have come through with the Harder South being approved, Harder North being submitted, and then also with the Sierra Central work. And so I'll have a little bit of more details, and you know, there's definitely, and Harder will add to it, but it's, joking aside, it seems like since 2010, it's really been non-stop, what can we work with Harder on how to help this become a viable project? And there are different options on trying to change land use, and then as they facilitate the update their finance plan, that we'll get into a little bit. But it's, there's really been a lot of ongoing talk with this recent submittal in 2019 really being, hey, this is where we're landed, and this is where we want to go to make that So with this, the financing strategy and phasing plan, the plan addresses timing, phases, costs, resulting cash flow. So with this big Harder specific plan, again, there's a financing plan that goes into it that basically spells out who builds what, who gets reimbursed for what, and how that's handled. Development agreement was executed in 2004. It's a 15-year agreement, which technically expired in November 2019. And since then, we've been in discussions on updating this DA through a Second Amendment or reestablishing it with this proposal. From staff's perspective, there was a lot of lessons learned from the financing plan. It was very detailed as to the phasing of the development and corresponding phasing of infrastructure improvements, where it then became, it's really became problematic since the recession, where if you try to build something out of the original design phase, then it threw the financing plan out of whack. And then how do you adjust for that without redoing the whole thing? Okay, so with the DA, so it lined out the developer's obligation. So it's an agreement between the county, or I'm sorry, between the city and the developer that basically spells out the terms of the agreement, and it usually locks in that entitlement for so many years. So it's usually a mutual agreement where the city gets the benefits because you're extending the lifespan of this development, and they're getting something out of it, but they're getting something because they're extending it and locking in so they could market it. Developer obligations, so what we require was, they need to participate in lighting and landscape maintenance district, pay impact fees in effect at time of building permit application, dedication of rightsway and other public properties prior to the issuance of the first building permit, and require the design and construction of the park prior to issuance of the 60th building permit for a single-family housing or first building permit for multifamily housing, and then to provide a public plaza area in parcel six located to the adjacent park. And so I'll go into that a little bit here. So then in 2008, we had the First Amendment to the DA. So when executed August 5, 2008, we modified the timing for the park construction. So 50% of the park construction, it was changed that it was to be completed prior to the issuance of the last occupancy permit in the Harder North or Harder South single. And so instead of being with the 60th house, we just, it went to either the north or the south when the final occupancy, whichever occurred first, and remaining 50% shall be completed prior to the issuance of the last occupancy permit for the other single family. And then we added to pay the levy fees. So completed development, there was the Sierra Central, I'll assert atop, so Home Depot was completed 2001, and then you have the Walmart Supercenter that was in 2006, and then with the portion of the business park for the Sierra Central Credit Union, we had in 2015. So there's multiple, there's long history with this, with it being over the last two decades. And so development has been very costly. The plan since 2004, there's been questions about why development has not occurred in the plan area. Development within the Harder specific plan area is very costly. In addition to city impact fees, developers pay a Harder fee. Prior to last year, the area did not meet council's criteria for an infill project, so projects did not receive the benefit of the reduced impact fees up until this last year. The fee amounts changed last year by a council solving a lot of those issues regarding the impact fee, but there's still obstacles with difficulty with developing it. Over the years, Harder Packing has approached staff numerous times to evaluate modifying land uses, different driveway options, infrastructure requirements, and discuss ways to make the projects more financially viable. And so with this, we could have Tom or Jay, I was going to ask them to speak a little bit about just their perspective on what the difficulty's been over the last decade and a half to make it happen.
Good evening, council members and planning commission members. Tom Tucker, Harder Packing Company, 1321 Harder Parkway, Uba City. I'm extremely excited to be here tonight and bring this project to you. As Ben said, I was going to discuss some of the difficulties, but I just want to bring a little bit of history into the plan. As we started out on Harder Packing Company, it was envisioned that this specific plan would be a place, a developed that had a work element to it, had an entertainment element to it, housing unit element to it, and be an area in the city to where you wouldn't have to get in a car to go anywhere. If you wanted to go to dinner, if you lived in that local area, that'd be within walking range. If you wanted to take your kids to a park, five-acre park, we know Uba City is in need of parks, so we didn't hesitate to add to the park. When the city came to us, I said it was a benefit for the city, draw up the deeds and we'll make it work. We didn't take any compensation for the additional land. Together, the over 20 acres of land, Harder Packing Company was dedicated to the city in one form or another, be it parkland, waterland, roadways, rideaways. About 10% of our land we dedicated to Uba City. As we get into Ben's portion, the obstacles to development, as you all are very aware, 2008, the big housing crash that happened, it not only affected the housing industry, but it affected the commercial elements too. Many developers, large developers, went out and put millions, tens of millions of dollars in infrastructure in developments such as Plumas Lake, Edgewater Orchard Developments, and was looking that this would never, that housing would never slow down. Well, when the crash did happen, it left all these lots and all this infrastructure in the ground. Many companies went bankrupt, many companies wrote down the value of the land and sold them off. We've had to compete with that. We had our impact fees up here, and with, given the value of the land going down, it just complicated things. And to compete with projects in the thousands of homes in the Plumas Lake area, just that alone right there, scale of economies for 150 homes, we couldn't compete with them. So I was very, very pleased that the city came up with a policy to include us in the infill, because that has been positive, and also the undergrounding policy. The recent underground policy helps every developer substantially. Other issues that we were struggling with was the commercial side on the store closers and the reopportunities. The commercial market slowed down, and Amazon is going to be a beast to compete with in the Prickin' Motors stores. I think we all realize that. We have reconfigured our property included, will be part of a rezone, where we take four acres, and those four acres are office development. That office development, there's a large surplus of office development here in Uba City. I don't see that office being taken up in the near future. We reconfigured our commercial to make it more dynamic for more mid-sized stores, not the great big box area stores you see, mid-sized stores, and we're actively pursuing those. Cost of everything is high. Harder Packing Company, when we did our first phase of development, we put $1.7 million in oversizing infrastructure. We'd like to take opportunity to recoup that. It's been a long time, that money's been out there, and as we go forward, we think we can recoup that. And we're still willing to invest in Uba City, but the dynamics and the financials have to be right. With that, I think I'm open to fielding any questions after Ben finishes his hesitation. Any questions now?
Any questions from the council? And commission? All right, thank you, Mr. Tucker.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll be hearing from you in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so that was basically the backstory of the Harder specific plan. And then so where we're at today to move forward is really, we're looking at the Harder North and South tentative maps, we're looking at a commercial parcel map, a general plan amendment, a Harder to update that zoning, a Harder specific plan amendment to reflect all these changes, and then a rezoning that matches the general plan land use changes. With that, then that triggers a development agreement amendment slash new one update, as far as bringing that into compliance with these changes and reestablishing it, a financing plan update, and an environmental document update. And so basically, over the last couple of years, a year and a half ongoing, there's been a lot of effort, a lot of money, both on the city staff time and on the Harder side, to work through this environmental update and all these different plan updates. And so what all that means is really, on paper and to everybody else that drives by, is that Harder North, you have a subdivision map, so it's on the west side of the road, south of Butte House Road, if you could see it, and there's 73 single-family residential lots proposed, with a corner here being three multifamily residential lots at 7.7 acres. Harder South, Harder State South, is with the color here, it's a little bit harder to see, but across from Walmart, here's Walmart down here, up with the extension of the old railroad tracks. I mean, you have Jefferson Boulevard being constructed for this portion, and then you'd come into a residential development that ties up against the existing residential homes to the west. And so you have another 77 residential lots on 15.4 acres. You have what's called Harder Marketplace. It's a parcel map with it being a commercial development, and it's broken into phases on the maps, on the map here, with individual property lines called out, you know, as they propose the building layout to be. And so there's, on this one, you could see, there's some changes down here from the original 2004 version, where the road is 90ed a little bit. We take into consideration a different, a new parcel that came into the plan area, and how this facilitates without the commercial office and being all commercial. So key land use changes, so with this, really, we're, real simply, we're taking some office commercial and we're changing it to commercial. But when you get into the weeds of the plan, there's some changes in there, also for the park, and recognizes the business park. And so you have the office commercial, let me flip to the next page. So you have a new land use plan with these proposed changes. We have, what was originally office is proposed to be commercial. It recognizes the business park office, Polygon 12, I can't even see number 12 up in here. It recognizes the Sierra Central development. It takes into consideration the park parcel, now being six plus the 1.3 with the water tank sites. And then is the addition of the southwest corner here, there's an area, number three? Yeah, the southwest corner where we've taken it, they purchased a home since then to reflect those different changes, and then minor roadway changes as discussed. So the park, this is a big, this is a big item. And so here, a few years ago, the city acquired a grant to build that park, and so, towards that park, and so we, the city attained, I believe, $800,000 for matching shares towards developing that park, and then also it's a million or so dollars for the shared bike path that helps build the extension of the bike path to the west, the hook to Hooper Road and Jefferson as it comes along into the park site. And so that's a big change, because originally with the development agreement, it was up to Harder to develop it at a certain trigger point with the houses. And then here to the south, this is the pavilion area, I guess we're saying, it's a buffer zone, it's referenced differently, but where this is at is, it's this area right between what's the commercial, and so you have the water tanks, you have the proposed park, and then this is this pavilion area where we're enhancing it with some funds that Harder's put into the, into the project financing plan to be this buffer area between the commercial and the park. And so with that, there's some draft ideas on how to spend those allocated funds with the park design to meet that requirement. So that's important, because when we get into the new DA, how do we reflect those changes in the finance plan, the credits for that? So development agreement, request for a Second Amendment. So with this entitlement process that we're going through right now with the new DA, there's a request to extend the term of the DA until 2036, so 15 years with an additional five-year extension option. Development of a credit and reimbursement agreement. Provide a credit against city impact fees for roadways, including any fair share Highway 20 improvement fees. Underground of utilities along Highway 20 frontage. Sewer and water improvements complete as part of the Uba City marketplace project. Credit would be addressed through a reimbursement agreement. Remove timing of part- Remove timing of park development as city has obtained the grant. And removal of the conservation easement requirement in the DA. So there was a conservation easement that wasn't required per the environmental document that was added in the DA, and with that, to clean that up and not put an additional burden on it, they've asked to take that conservation easement requirement out of the new DA. With that, maybe I've powered through here, but so, there's a lot to take in, you know, between the three, between the three subdivisions, and then with the, with all the plan updates is really what's going to come, come before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the council, and then to the council twice, based on approving the general plan amendment and then updating the ordinances with two rezones. And so, that's at minimum, if it's not changed or extended. And so, we're looking, we're targeting a timeline right now to bring it to the Planning Commission, possibly as early as the next meeting, and then to the city council thereafter once we get it on. And so, with that, I'd open it up and answer any questions, and we could really, we have the staff here to get into the weeds on any of it, at whatever level everybody chooses.
Let's start with the Planning Commission for any questions.
You mentioned that the original DA, the conservation easement, did not include...
The original DA, my understanding, it called out an additional conservation easement for this, for the payment towards buying land that was in addition to the environmental mitigations. And so with, with this request to the DA, is to update that and take that, take that out.
And what's the reason for taking it out?
That it wasn't environmental, it wasn't, it wasn't, I could have Harder Group add to their basis, but my understanding is that it wasn't a required mitigation under the environmental document, and it was added in this city developer agreement that has that flexibility. So they're asking to take it out because it's an increased burden.
Why did the city, what was the city's intent to put it in to begin with? I think that should be considered as a correction that they're taking about.
You know, I don't have much history on that. I could definitely look into it a little bit if it was some sort of requirement at that time, or if that was what was, you know, while you're dealing with a Walmart, that's always political, politically contentious. I'm sure Tom might have a little bit of info on it. Yeah.
When we came public that the Walmart was going forward, we faced strong opposition by the grocers union. The attorneys threw everything, everything they could think of. Matter of fact, I remember the judge saying, "If we had it your way, the only thing that would be sold on Plumas Street would be horse, buggies, and whips." And so, we tried, we tried to overprotect ourselves, and at the point in time, the city said, "Look, you know, this is going to be an issue. They're going to dig their heels in on, and if it's not in the DA, we didn't want it, but we agreed to it under protest," is the best way I could say, "because of the litigation that was ongoing." And I'll remain here in case somebody else has any other questions.
Trying to get the...
This is Lori, I have a question.
Yeah, I was trying to get Lori and the attorney on the screen here if we can.
Ben, can you go back to the slide that shows the proposed change in the zoning and
Can you see that? It's pretty small, but I might have one with the actual changes there. Office to commercial, Polygon 3.
I can't really see it, but when, when there, when we had some conversations, when they brought forth some ideas, they had brought forth an idea of putting in a, kind of a 24-hour service station, kind of grocery store, mini mart type location in one of the corners. Is that type of a commercial use going to be a part of what would be allowed in the zoning changes that they're proposing?
So, so C3 is the highest intensity use for commercial, is allowed down in this corner section. Yeah, let me get one.
That's the bottom, that's the bottom, closer to the 20 corridor, is that correct?
Yes. So, so it's towards the 20 corridor, it's split by Jefferson, so you have the Walmart signal, right here where you come out of Walmart, it goes north a little bit where you'd have Jefferson. This would be the top of the commercial area, and basically, this was already zoned C3 to take this in, and now we're adding this back office area to that. Right now, I believe Tom may be able, the Harder Group might be able to add kind of some plans about their future here, but C3 does support the highest intensity use, which is from a box store to a mini mart. I would add, though, that with, you know, some sort of drive-through or gas station, that there is a supplemental where they'd have to come to the Planning Commission for approval of any drive-throughs or gas pumps. And then based on the size of the development, it would still trigger plan review, a development plan review based on the size to the Planning Commission, then to the city council, depending on how big it is.
I do have some concerns about that use in that developed area, just based on the park, some of the, the height, the high-traffic use that ends up there, and this trying to become more of an urban, I wrote down, kind of a live-work-play concept, and having that high-traffic volume in a mini mart type situation with gas pumps could be problematic in creating that atmosphere. So I just want to express my concerns on that.
And again, just to add to that, what's, the real zoning change that's coming up here, besides updating the map to account for the acreages, the real change here is down in this area, too. That's really where you're having that office go to C3. Up here and up by the park, that has been zoned C3 into a higher dense, higher intensity of commercial, and I believe with that, that's why they called out for that buffer zone, that pavilion, kind of that area to interact between the park with that. And I think we've, Tom, you could add to it, about 116,000 towards that?
I was just going to add to it that the zoning on the commercial towards the highway is the same zoning Walmart has. Walmart already, and I don't know why they never did, but they may someday put their own fueling station in there, but the Walmart project was approved for a fueling station. We're asking no more zoning than what we have across the street from us, which I think is compatible.
I have another question, Ben, a quick. So, can't remember the name of it, but there's other, sort of, access roads that get access to the development, existing developments immediately to the west of all of this, and it allows those people to come from there to the little access road to get up to Walmart. Is that going to be removed as it all gets developed? And if it is, those people, are they going to be removed to that, still towards Walmart? Are they going to have to go up the other direction and get on the 20 and come around?
So for those online, they couldn't hear, Planning Commissioner Schaefer basically asked if the frontage road connection on the west side of Harder will remain. And so, yes, it will, it's getting reconfigured. And so that was an important, that was a important consideration, because there was a lot that went into trying to figure out the layout for the commercial, and then the depth, the size of the buildings that meet the current market need, but also facilitating that roadway, and then also access. And so, what's different with this is now, instead of kind of having a swooping where we come up and then go out, it's more 90ed, and then you'll...
Okay, that's what that is.
It's more, it's direct elbows.
Okay.
And then there's also a couple driveways here that have been added. And so, it's definitely thoroughly analyzed, look at the traffic to make sure we weren't setting up any sort of issues with the traffic flow.
Nope, nope, nope. All right. Bring it back to the council for some questions.
Yes, Ben, just expand on Planning Commissioner Schaefer's question. That's, that's a roundabout, correct?
So, so right now, we're called for a roundus, you know, roundabout, traffic circle, you know, it's a small roundabout, basically to the west, and how they would facilitate that flow into the commercial area than down there. And so, there will definitely be a little bit of a flow, but these, these residents still will be able to come out. There's going to be a designated road, even though it will be somewhat through a parking area, but it's set up as a residential road layout, you know, as far as, it's not a full road like you're driving in the residential area, but it's pretty close. And then you'll come up, make your right turn and go out, or a roundabout and come down.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Ben and Mr. Tucker, I just want to make sure that we all understand. My understanding is Area 3 there that you were talking about for the high-density C3 for a gas station or drive-throughs or whatever, it's currently zoned that right now, today. So we're not looking to change that at all, and that's been consistent for quite some time. Okay. And all we're looking at is changing the parcel that was immediately to the west and rezoning it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'd like to add, too, that that roadway, the old former frontage roadway, it will be pedestrian-friendly. It will have curb gutter and sidewalk for pedestrians.
Where's that, Tom?
The realignment of the new roadway, you see the roundabout in the center? That goes through, and there's a semi-roundabout at the bottom. So if people want to turn around and go out, instead of go through the shopping center, they can. And one side is intended to be curb gutter sidewalk for pedestrians. There'll be about a third of the way up, there'll be, Ben can point at it, there will be a, actually, they'll have better exit, one of the, I've worked with the neighbors, one of the concerns they had was getting out of the area in an emergency, and where Ben's pointing right there will be a right turn out only. So it'll give them, they don't have to go all the way up to the roundabout if they want to go out and go, but if they do want to go north on Harder, they'll have to go up to the roundabout.
And you referenced their concern was in an emergency, but is that, after your further description, after that, it sounds like it's going to be open all the time for that option, ride out only?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a, there'll be three, there'll be a full movement, ride in, ride out, about in the center of the project, right there. The one below it will be a ride out only, and the one above it was in, at the Walmart intersection, full movement.
All right, thank you. Did, did you guys want the roundabout, or was that something that the city?
We opted for the roundabout.
Okay.
We thought it'd be a nice feature.
As long as it was you.
The way it is right now, you can't...
I'm not a roundabout fan. Fire trucks have a hard time on those things.
Some places, they're appropriate, but you know...
As long as you're okay with it.
Highways and interstates, I don't know about that. You see, you've been to the Home Depot in the Thomas, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Similar to the Thomas.
Okay, yeah. Like I said, as long as you're okay with it.
You're okay with it.
Vice Mayor.
I have other questions regarding other things, so I don't want to leave this in case someone has a question on these particular parcels, I'll defer.
Through the, through the mayor. Ben, I'm trying to just see the whole picture at once. Do you have one map that I can see all of that, or is it just because it's so...
You know, not, not great, I really don't. I should have took a little more time. And so the Harder North, so where you're looking at up here is the subdivision, is the residential subdivision, your park, your park is right in here, and then you have a little, basically commercials, kind of a triangle right in here. Then up here, you have the multifamily, this triangle wedge is here is the multifamily. And then when you drop into here, basically, you have the Harder South, which is residential, in this corner and kind of comes out, as it ties into Jefferson, and then this is, this rectangle area is basically the commercial.
Okay, so I, okay, I get it now. So that three is on the corner right there where Buffalo Wild Wings is titled right there, but it's in that, okay, that's...
It's across the way, it's, if you, if you look straight west from Buffalo Wild Wings, back up against the residential, this is where it was called office.
So the park actually is on the top, the water tower where we have.
It's just to the east, so it's kind of going to tie into it, and it's going to be, I think, if you do a drive-by, there's some mounds of dirt out there right now that is kind of in the park area as we're gearing up for construction on that.
So the, the commissioner, one of the commissioners brought up the concern about traffic in that particular area. What's the plan for parking around the park area to make sure there's enough availability to kind of move in and out with all the movement of that?
It's a little hard to see, but with that, there's, with the design that's being done internally here with a consultant, is that we've, so here's, let me see, my thing stopped working. So here's Harder, here's the water tank, and so there's this, this kind of perpendicular driveway, this kind of dual-sided parking lot proposed on the south side of it.
So the difference, just for me to be clear, Tom, you mentioned that there was, what was the acreage, about 10 acreage that you said was donated to the city and some sort of non-cost to the city? You mentioned in your opening, I believe, so I'm wondering, you know, the park is part of that, but I think that's part of the agreement, wasn't it, part of the initial agreement?
Yes, the six-acre park was part of the original agreement. After the entitlement process was completed, and we were done, and we had no more negotiations, the city came to Harder Packing Company and said, "We underestimated our water needs for west side of Yuba City, and we'd like to purchase another acre, acre and a half from you." I told them, "Go prepare the deeds, we won't take any cash. It's a gift, a donation to the city for the benefit of the city." And so, we could have, they were offering to pay 200 to 250,000 dollars. I actually told them, "Take the money and use it somewhere else in the city or for another benefit for the city."
So was the original design of the conversation that you as a developer, and I'm using that in general terms, would be responsible for actually the design and putting in place the park, but now the city is helping with that?
Well, you have to...
I just need to kind of get some clarity on that.
The terminology, I think, or the reasoning, I should say, is that it was required after the 50th dwelling, and we could use the fee credits from those homes to use towards the design of the park. With that being said, because of market conditions, every housing developer that I ever talked to said, "That's a killer deal." And this, and you know, nobody was going to put upfront a million dollars for a park development and then build homes to wait to get it back.
Right, right. So now with the city providing the 800,000 grant, that kind of eases that burden on the developer, would you not say?
Yes, it does ease it, too, but in consideration for that, Harder Packing's going to be building the roadway between there, but we'll get some fee credits. We're going to build a half-section of that roadway, is going to be our responsibility because our property borders it. The other half-section is Yuba City's. Harder has agreed to build that section out if it gets fee credits for the development of the roadway for the park.
That's where those credits are coming in, okay.
Kind of works both ways. It helps Yuba City and it helps us.
Okay. No, that makes sense. So what potential businesses are you considering, are you bringing to this area, because you have these commercial options? So I'm just curious to know who you're talking to.
Yeah, well, the west side of Yuba City is, there's a lack of fuel stations. I think there's only the 76, only two west of 99.
Okay.
Forget where the other one is. Mr. Paul's, yeah, and, you know. And the residents that I have spoke to, they'd love, love to see some... they'd love to see some restaurants and some fueling stations there. I have been open with them and told them I'm possibly going to have a fueling station. Let us get through this entitlements. But I've told them I'm not ruling out a fueling station.
So, one thing that I get asked a lot, and I'm not sure if the consideration is, you know, for pricing points of these homes, you know, are we looking at 200,000 to 500,000, 600,000? And I know the market is inflated at this point, but what are those price points for the housing that you're talking about?
Well, you know, what dictates the price of the homes is size of lots. To try to make that viable, you know, we could probably go out there and put larger homes and charge more. But the market absorption of the larger homes in the half-million and above is maybe 10%. What we, the size lots, is it going to be medium-priced homes? If that's where you're headed, they're not going to be.
What is medium-priced homes to you?
I would say in the range of 350 to 4.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I know a lot of working professionals, and they're struggling to try to find a home, and they want to live in Yuba City. And the market, the inventory is very low.
Oh, yeah, I know.
As you know that. And so, as we all know that, I think the price points are a little challenging for folks that are making 60,000 to 80,000 a year. That's usually kind of the folks that are asking me about, you know, "Where can I buy a house in Yuba City?" And so.
Well, these homes are intended to be medium-priced income homes.
Okay. That's all I have for that. Thanks.
If I could just add on to the fee credit. Sometimes it gets into the weeds a little bit, and it's complicated. So, I want to make sure it's clear on the park. And so, on the, when it was first approved back in 2004, they said that with this 60th home, Harder had to build the park. But with that park, it's a public park in the city. We receive fee credits. And so, the burden was they would have to design, build it. And then as those homes got built, they would, they would not have to pay that park fee, which is, you know, $7,000 to $10,000 depending on what point in time, infill rates, different things. And so, so when they went to go build the house, then they would not pay that city impact fee, and they would get credit as they build homes towards that park cost. And so, so there was always a responsibility for the city to pay them back for building the park. It was just the burden was on them to build it and then get reimbursed over time. And so, with the change in the grant, the city's now taking the lead with the design 15 years later because we want to park. There's initiative to do that and then move forward with that design. And so, there still is some fee credits associated with the adjacent road and how that plays out. And so, that's the big difference, is the city was always on the hook for the park cost. But there's, there's, there's time and energy with implementing it and then the reimbursed cost of money, time value of money on the reimbursement.
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
If I can follow up on that. Ben, you're down the avenue that my follow-up question was on, and it really boils down to dollars and cents, okay? I noticed in the general plan amendment you guys were talking about, or it might have been the Harder specific. But anyway, one of them, you were talking about fee credits for all the infrastructure that's been put in and oversized. But then to the point that was made earlier, we do have the, it's a little over a million dollars between the bike path and the park that we've received grants that would have been the developers' costs that we're kicking in. But then again, there's the park fees per the parcel. So, for me, I would like to see how all these numbers work together because we need to do everything we can to develop Yuba City because of the simple fact, we've missed the boat for the past 10 years, people. Bottom line, growth has happened all around us. We took a mentality of, you know, raising the impact fees and it priced us out of the market. You know, back to Councilwoman Esmondola's question concerning affordable, 350, 400,000 is getting to be the mid-size home. There's nothing we can do about that. That's the economy. What we have to focus on is building all houses and trying to attract the employers that will bring better-paying jobs to the area. It all works harmoniously together. So, when we get to the fee credits and then we're talking about the money from the park, I'm one that would like to see kind of all, how all the numbers come together just to make sure that everything is fair and equitable to the developer and the city and make sure that, that we're not taking too much, you're not taking too much, and at the end of the day, we're all doing what's best for our city. So, and I think the data's there, but we don't get it in the PowerPoint tonight because that's a heck of a calculation to figure that all out. So, is that something we can look at having in the future, Mr. Moody?
Yeah, absolutely. We actually have Mike Whipple, who's the consultant regarding the financing plan. And I know Diana, with her history here, has spent a lot of time getting into the weeds on the reimbursement, what's credible or not. I don't know, Mike, if you have anything to add to it?
Am I still on mute or am I off mute?
You're good.
You're good.
All right, yeah, yeah. So, Mike Whipple with DFA. I've been working with Tom and the Harder group to update the financing plan, what we call the Public Facilities Financing Plan. The question you asked is spot-on. The reports, the study that will identify impact fees, constructed infrastructure, fair share allocations, how everything works together is identified in that, in that Public Facilities Financing Plan. We have a draft that's ready to go once the, all the land uses get finally approved and changed. And that document will be submitted for review by Planning Commission and City Council.
Okay, thank you. My final question, Mr. Tucker. Oops, BTU. I accidentally hit the button again. And the developers, this has been already a 15-year project. And I know that you guys have ran into a heck of a lot of frustration, the recession, the difficulty of developing it. I mean, we can go into all kinds of history with what's been there. Me, as a sitting council member, I want to see development happen. I want to see our city build out the stuff that we've talked about for 20 years. I want to see the jobs come here. So, while it may be talking about a 15-year plan, realistically, if you could take a best guess, what is it really going to take? Because I hate seeing projects come before us that is 20 years, 25 years, 15 years, and they've already been there. And I, and I get all the obstacles. I'm not belittling that at all, Tom. I just want to know really what kind of, you know, timeframe? If we can all come together with this, what would be your ultimate goal as a developer?
I, you know, I really don't want to be locked into a set timeline that, and mislead you.
Right.
But I can give you my opinion.
That's what I would ask for.
Okay. My opinion is that Block 3, the closest one to Harder Road and the intersection of Highway 20.
Yes, sir.
Two to three years, I expect that to be built out.
Okay.
There has been interest in it.
How about the homes?
The, on the homes, I've, I've had some inquiries from home builders, and I've told them they're going through our financing with the city. I don't want to obligate something to a home builder and get in contract or take them down the road and the numbers not be there. I would say the first one, because of where the infrastructure lies, would be Harder South. And I would expect that to be three to five years.
Okay.
Five, probably at the most. Of course, this, you have to consider the economy, too. With the new president, new people in office, a decision could be made that just crashes the financial market. So, given those, if things were normalized and maintained normalized like they are now, I would say five years south. Multifamily would probably be the next, up on the upper end of the property. And I would say five to seven years. And I would say probably three to five on the north, too.
Okay. The reason that I ask, and I appreciate your candidness.
And one thing, the office portion, the west side along Tharp Road, there's a lot of interior property there. That's probably going to take the longest.
Okay.
To develop.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Tom. The, the reason I ask is just looking at the information we're getting, Sacramento is supposed to be the number-one real estate market in the nation over the course of the next year. You see a lot of people relocating from the Bay Area's up towards this region. And I just go back, you know, to what we experienced with the Paradise Fire, that tragedy that happened there. Adventists tried to move a lot of their personnel down here, and they couldn't find housing. So, they weren't able to relocate to our community. So, while I welcome the businesses, we need residents as well. And so, that's why I asked the question. And I wanted to know what we're looking at.
I hear that, Dave. And I think because they're medium-priced incomes, once the first couple houses go up, it won't be long.
All right, thank you, Tom.
Welcome. I was wondering if Brian can mute whatever's going on in the background? If you're on with us on, on the Zoom, if you could please mute, we would appreciate it. We're getting some background noise here in the council chambers. I do have a couple comments, but before I make them, I want to make sure that the Planning Commission doesn't have any additional comments based on some stuff that we've raised up here? Yes, please.
No, I'm looking at Sean just because he's real familiar with the district boundaries. My guess would be at Terrebonne. There, I think Buvis is across Buute House. Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and piggyback on your comment, if I might. The vice mayor and I, along with city staff, met with Superintendent Osumi and their financial person, Mr. Shemwell, recently about development impact fees and our growth policies. Certainly, anything, you know, we're going to partner with the schools because it's a quality-of-life issue. So, there's some growth policy things that we're sorting through in regards to their ability or our ability to make sure they pay their way. But they're very, very aware of what's going on. And I know that belief, that we were told they were doing their studies right now to help. Again, it's going to be one of those chicken and egg things. It's going to be a while before the impact fees come in to support the school, so they're going to work their finance out.
Mark, if I may add to that. They've already been in contact with me, the school districts, inquiring on how many residential multifamily and single-family homes. So, I know they're working on that.
Yeah, we were encouraged by the meeting. Did you have a comment? We, we have to be able.
Commissioner, I know.
Let me, let me add in here. Mr. Al, I think somebody's hopped in for the planning commission meeting. So, I don't know if Beto or Mr. Alvarado?
Hold on.
Shut off his microphone. If he would be so kind as to shut it off, and for some reason, can't shut that off, if Ms. Wakefield has any ability to shut that off so that we can actually hear what's going on in the meeting?
Yeah, with the teams. I don't know if, Beto, can you hear me?
It's Beto Alvarado is the guest name.
Yeah. He's up for the planning commission meeting with an item later on, is what's happened. He's logged in, but we're trying to get a hold of him.
Okay, thanks. So, again, hearing nothing else from the planning commission. First off, Mr. Tucker, I was on the journey with you way back when with the other owners with.
Two of us left, you, I, and Diana.
Yeah. And, you know, this project has been, you know, the, the initial efforts really opened up the western growth of the city of Yuba City. And the participation by the owners of this property, I think, you know, we don't have Home Depots and Walmarts. You know, some people might be happy with that. But frankly, I think it's a good thing for our community. So, you know, it has been a long process for you. And I know that there's been a lot of ups and downs. One thing I wanted to get clear in my mind again, because we've talked about it for a lot, is the oversizing. And I don't know if it's a Ben or a Diana or even you, Tom, but could you, just so we have this information, there was some oversizing done for, I think it was sewer, wasn't it? Or was it the water?
Sewer and water.
Yeah, maybe just explain a little bit about, you know, the efforts that were made with that and your participation with that as well.
When we first proposed the Walmart development, Walmart, we did our cost estimates, and Walmart said, "Well, we're going to pay for our share," and they paid a little more. With that, we were left for sewer and water or received from Yuba City. And the city did their analysis on what it would take to size that. And so, the oversizing is for the rest of the property to be developed. Some of that capacity will even, some, some areas will benefit beyond us because of the oversizing. So, not only does Harder Pacific Plan benefit by some of the oversizing, once it's extended, the pipes will be the right size for future growth. Now, how much future growth? You'll have to talk to the staff about that.
That's Diana, right?
With the storm drainage, that's county issue. We're in Zone Benefit 6. And we still have about a quarter million dollars. Walmart funded 72%, Harder funded 28% of the storm drainage. And to Harder, we still have about a quarter million dollars in reimbursements due us. So, that's in addition to that 1.7 on city. So, over 2 million.
Okay.
And we designed that, too, that storm system to adequately service all our property, and I believe 160 acres plus. So, areas outside of us will benefit from that, too.
I appreciate you bringing that up because I know that's been, been an issue out there. The vice mayor, when he made his comments in regards to the financial planning, I'm very interested in taking a look at that. I know this council has been very aggressive in regards to making the fees as fair and equitable to development, but also to the revenue streams for the city as well. So, we're looking forward to, to Mike's report and working with you on that. I do have a question, and this is probably to staff as well. I know that we're in the middle of a transportation or road, traffic study, right? Is that going to affect any of this? Okay. None of the intersections are going to change? Or would it help them potentially?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It helps development throughout the sphere of influence because we have reanalyzed the road sections required to serve the sphere. And for some of the roadways that are currently identified in the general plan as four-lane arterials, we've been able to downsize those to more so two-lane roadways. And so, with that, the cost of the overall improvements will be reduced. And so, when you spread that out over the entire sphere of influence, then you would see a lower traffic impact fee. And so, they benefit from that standpoint because, as Ben noted in the staff report, not only do they pay the city impact fees, but they also pay the Harder fee. And so, the more that we're able to reduce the city impact fees, that helps them.
All right, perfect, thanks. I do know also, we've met with the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency on their fee because levy fees was called out in one of the slides. And we got some encouraging news from them as well that they, they're redoing or taking a look at their, at their fees, too. So, again, high interest in seeing what the financial stuff comes from. So, that, again, fair to you, but fair to us as well as the city.
I think that because of the number of residential units, 150 R1s plus 180 multifamily, that your concerns will be at rest with the fee charges. I think there'll be more inadequate money to make sure the city's whole.
Okay. A final question I have is, to upgrade or redo or amend or make a new development agreement, I did see where it's going to trigger some other studies. Is that going to be factored into this financial plan? Who's bearing the burden of that?
So, currently, development has hired their own ESA and their own consultants. So, Harder, so Harder Group is paying for the majority of these, these studies. Staff time has been by the city.
Okay.
But, you know, as far as updating the finance plan, doing the environmental supplemental amendment, Shannon could add to it. But we have incurred staff time for our attorney to review the documents, and we've incurred our staff time for that.
Okay. I'm going to surprise the city attorney by asking for public comment, and he won't have to remind me to do so. have to remind me to do so. Anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to say before we turn it over to Sierra to find out if anybody online has anything to say? Okay. Sierra, anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay. Final, final chance for anybody to ask a question or make a comment, including you, Mr. Tucker, or anybody else in the audience?
Through the mayor, I just would like to echo what the Vice Mayor and you both have said. And I think the importance in the housing, where Chairperson Blake, Commissioner said, I'm like you, Vice Mayor. The housing is really where the, I mean, the commercial development is part of the process and respectful to that as developers. But we really need housing. A lot. There's a tremendous need for that. So, and, and the question about the education system is an important one to also consider throughout the time of the development. And in my two years of quick study and learning, this infrastructure is quite debilitating for developers if it's not in place. It's, it's a tremendous cost, time factor. I just want to echo that I recognize that and, and realize that, and this is a true partnership that we're trying to do, as our mayor said. So we want to make sure that we take care of our developers, but also make sure the city's completely not having a, a financial hole in the future that will end up within our taxpayers. But housing is really important.
All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Just one final comment to Mr. Tucker and the Harder Group. You guys have had a long road for quite a long time. And as one council member, I'm looking forward to working collaboratively with you guys and bringing this to a reality for Uba City because it's been too long in the making.
Well, I'd like to thank the council and the Planning Commission for giving us this opportunity, and especially to staff. As trouble as the economy's been and as many times as I've knocked on their door, they've never shut the door. They've been open to suggestions. And I have a lot of, a lot of good things I could continue to say about your staff. I did butt heads with a couple of your planning directors when they said, "I'd bring it the job?" "No. You bring me something beautiful and glorious?" And I said, "What do you want?" And they said, "Well, something big and glorious." But the planning department you have now has, has been open and is where before it was, "No, you need to bring this and this." They've listened to your suggestions, and they've been very supportive.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Harris, Councilwoman Kirchner. All right. Well, then with nothing else, we're going to close the council meeting and hand it off to the Planning Commission. We'll switch seats and here we go.
Thank you, everybody.